...the announcer, Matt.
I guess that's all I had for tonight. Again, any questions you may have in the interim, let me know. I'd like to have a chance to review, you know, some more of the numbers regarding the village's budget, just to make sure we've got everything covered accurately in the report. You know, again, I don't want any surprises either, so.
No, that's it.
Oh, okay. Any other comments from the public?
Quick one, just making sure that our treasurer and superintendent DTW is involved, because these EDUs are sort of crucial. And if we're counting on either discounting or treating buys differently than the current revenue stream, we have to be very, very sure the projections are there. We don't want to lose either water usage or EDUs if we need them, so.
Lieutenant Roberts, Smith, Fourth Street, Smith Street.
Yep.
I received a report today from our village treasurer that I find very alarming and should be for the village's residents. I requested from the treasurer a report on how much this administration has spent on legal fees during its first six months in office. To me, the numbers were quite astonishing. This board has spent sixteen thousand seventy-two dollars and fifty cents on legal fees from April 1st to September 30th. In comparison, the village spent five thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars in 2010 and five thousand six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy cents in 2011 during the same timeframe. That's over three times of what was previously spent. It's also my understanding the village has pending litigation against it with a new case recently opened for suspended patrolman Scott Becher. So obviously, these legal fees are going to skyrocket over the next few months. So I'd like to know what the board is doing or plan on doing to minimize legal fees in the future.
Scott's coming back to work next Saturday.
We can't really talk about it.
Personal issue, we shouldn't really talk about. I spend a hundred and fifty dollars a month on planning board and lawyer.
I also want to mention its four-year term is up for contract negotiations. That's been ongoing for a couple of months.
A lot of money right there.
Yeah, well, we dealt with that last April as well. That's why I wanted to go back the last two, previous two years to do comparison.
Well, it's an impasse now, so there's been several meetings already.
It's an impasse.
Obviously, the costs are going to go up with all these issues, but it's not just one thing, several.
All right. Anybody else go ahead?
Mayor, just a quick question. Some of the legal fees are reimbursables. I know that Marina Lighthouses run off about nine hundred dollars in legal fees, and if you didn't subtract those out, you would think they were additional. But some of the legal fees that you're looking at are being reimbursed.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for your time.
Yep.
Thank you, great, thank you, Matt.
Thanks for talking with us.
Ah, nice, thank you, boy.
For sure, I want to. Steve.
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 Boss is calling.
I've asked her in a second discussion afterwards.
No.
Okay, I'll let you know. I'll get back to you.
Okay. Minutes of the regular meeting, the regular meeting of October 1st, 2012.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of October 1st, 2012.
Any discussions? No discussions, vote aye, you decide.
Aye.
Rumor mills. You all have pocket bills?
What's the supplemental? What's the supplemental list?
Oh, supplemental list.
Do you want to read them, Arson?
Uh, well, I can't, I just.
You don't have them, then.
That's why I passed them out, because there were so many of them there.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills tonight as amended.
Seconded.
Any discussions?
Vote aye, you decide.
Aye.
Mayor, please, the mayor, I think I'll go a minute to explain.
Yeah, go ahead.
Ever since I came into this job, the mayor asked me to take a look at the budget. Obviously, we have a growing community. The budget has fluctuated. I want to explain why I abstain. I started it probably second month into this position. I started noticing a lot of duplication, runaway costs. Obviously, the bills have to get paid. An abstention is not a vote. It's not a vote for, it's not a vote against. It's just not a vote. It's not recorded. The reason I do it is basically a protest. Obviously, we have every meeting, a hundred and thirty-five items on here. There's no way we can go through each one of these and look at each one of these and vote up or down on each one. Now, eighty or ninety percent of these are valid. If we didn't have a corner tonight, I obviously would have voted yes to pay for the bills. But I'm not going to change my principles. That every ten or twenty percent, I think, is undue. We spend way too much money. Some of this stuff we don't need, some of it's duplicative, so I abstain. I just wish that people, if they have comments, would come to the meetings and discuss it with us, rather than bouncing off the rumor mill walls. Their hand wringing and their complaints all around the village backstabbing is not helping the situation. I've said over time and time again, the village is in financial problems. Please come to the meetings, give us ideas on how to fix this, rather than bouncing off the rumor mills. So that is my reason, and I abstain. Thank you.
Who responds?
The first item I have is I received a certified mail from the last resort, an notification to renew of the application for the liquor license, and that's just information. And the second item I had came in from the Clinton County Health Department from John Canosa regarding a preliminary engineering report for the water shared improvements. The Clinton County Health Department has completed a review of the document titled Water Shared Improvements Project, produced by Bernie O'Carroll and Associates and dated August 2012. Please note, the Clinton County Health Department strongly supports this project. The needs and objectives listed in the subject report and preliminary efforts made by all of you, your staff and representatives from Bernie O'Carroll and Associates in this endeavor. Of the numerous planning, administrative, and technical items identified in the report, the Clinton County Health Department provides the following support, comments, and recommendations for your consideration. Because the project will serve three distinct municipalities, it is strongly recommended that the first administrative effort for this project include the negotiation and preparation of an intermunicipal project agreement. As pertaining to project funding, capital expenditures, engineering design, engineering contract repayment, project inspection, project billing, and subsequent future project infrastructure operation and maintenance. Because the technical success and future of this intermunicipal project heavily depends upon the identification of its satisfactory quality and yield, groundwater source investigation of such potential groundwater resources in the regional area should be initiated as soon as practical. The Clinton County Health Department understands one or more of our local water supply well drillers may possess significant knowledge and experience regarding groundwater resources in the subject area. Again, Clinton County Health Department emphasizes our maximum support for this project. And please know, our environmental health and safety division, water program staff, and I will be available to provide any assistance and endorsement for this project as requested in the future.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Reports of the mayor and the trustee. Mayor Baker, I got a, I got an appointment for Lenny Faneau to the zoning board. He should be on the zoning board. Hold on that, Lenny. For Lenny. Lenny's going to the zoning board.
Oh, I have him on there. You had a couple of your items prior.
Yeah, I got two of the others.
You had some mayor appointment, I don't think I have to hold on.
You can make the appointment.
Okay, I made the appointment. All right, we got, also got a D and H project update.
I don't have any, you didn't give me any.
I didn't get nothing. Well, you're on your way anyways. They got part of the roof tore off. The asbestos, I guess, the inside of the building, I'm understanding, is done. I guess they got clean air now. So if they finish up the roof on the, get the rest of the roof off, they should be out of the way in the contractor and go to work. But the way they've been dragging their feet and farting around, I don't know if that's going to take place right off quick.
Have they started some brick laying outside?
Yeah, he's doing brickwork. The kid can do it. Nation can do it.
Supposed to be done Friday, when I gather the roof.
Huh?
It's supposed to be done Friday, the roof.
I hope so. It's toward down, never gonna be that done. That's the update, first I know of anything. You know anything more, Ben?
No, I go over there a couple of times a day.
Yeah.
Stuff like that.
That's all I've got, I've gotten on it. Oh, and I was asked to ask you, the board here, if you, as a historical society, want to take care of the station. I don't know what you guys want to do. One thing I don't want to see it open from October 15th, the first of May, because there's no insulation in that place. Now you're going to eat it.
We need to get together a memorandum of understanding to say who's going to run it and what times of the year, something.
Yeah.
Well, if you put.
Can I speak, or?
If you put the museum in there, you're going to have to have E in there.
Well, we're going to put it down in forty.
Down in forty-five. If you can't do that, if you got the museum in there.
If you have.
I mean, you got a person in there all day long, on, on, once a week.
Would you want to be there all day long?
Well, if you put the museum in there, like the stuff that's upstairs in the village office right now, unless you leave her there.
Well, Donna's not going there.
Oh, okay, all right, okay.
She planning to stay right where she's at?
Oh, all right, okay.
The last I talked to her, the last I know, I should change her mind, but she hasn't said nothing to me.
Yeah, okay. No, I didn't know if you were doing anything with her or not, or whatever.
No, I wanted to see where she's at.
Jerry, you needed, you wanted to?
Well, I was just, I was curious if the new board was going to still want the Historical Society to run the museum. And I have drafted a memorandum of understanding, and I've had a attorney that I know in Plattsburgh that has looked at it, and she had a number of comments and stuff. So Wednesday night, we're going to have a meeting, and hopefully, my board will be there, and we're going to go over it again and try to iron things out, like who's going to own the building, who's going to own the collection, what, who's going to be responsible for certain bills, you know. We're going to, we're going to write grants. Hopefully, we're going to write grants to get stuff in, like if the work isn't all completed, we might be able to get something from, I don't know. But, I mean, we will explore all that. That's our intentions. So we've outlined it, I think there's like thirteen steps in the itinerary that I had looked at, it says that it needs some more work. So, I mean, I wrote it, so it's kind of, you know, it's not, it's not a legal document, so. And the Historical Society, a number of us have been to a lot of meetings and seminars and workshops, and we've done a lot of training. And, you know, we have fairly good understanding about how to handle the collection and to make sure it's safe as far as from, you know, mold and, and, you know, that kind of stuff. Not so much, you know, we need to work on and make sure it's secure, that nobody's going to come in and steal anything, either while it's open or break into the building and steal stuff. This is going to be stuff in there that's going to be worth a little bit of money. So we've, we've put a lot of effort into it. So after Wednesday night, after we, my board goes over this agreement again, and I'll probably, you know, talk to this attorney again, we'll present it to the board. And for you to look at, not exactly sign the minute we put it down in front of you, but you probably will want Tom Renee to take a look at it too, to make sure, you know, it's, covers everybody, so.
I just want to add that if you're going to put memorabilia and whatever, I mean, old records from the railroad and stuff that has value, you don't want light, too much light, you don't want too much heat, and you don't want it too cold. So you want to make sure that it doesn't get too cold in there, because it's going to break down the old papers and the documents and stuff like that. Like, I had some stuff I was going to donate to the railroad museum, but if it's not going to be taken care of, I'm not going to donate it, because I want it to stay in the building.
And other people won't either. We can't guarantee that stuff's going to be taken care of. I think the building is supposed to be temperature and humidity controlled, isn't it? Isn't that part of the, of the work that's supposed to be going on in there?
I don't know if that was included, and some of that stuff was taken out.
And like the archive room, there's possibility we might be able to write a grant to get a specific room set up in there to take care of some of those things that are not going to be in display cases. But, I mean, we have to know that we have the backing of the board also before we go forward with a lot of these things.
Carol, so you want on the next board meeting agenda to come and present what you found at your meeting and to talk about the memorandum?
Sure.
Okay. Can you put that in the next meeting?
I don't know. Maybe, maybe we better wait a month.
Oh, wait, okay.
Just to make sure. I'll let you know, well before the.
All right.
Along the lines of the, of the museum, there was also three thousand dollars in the budget last year that was rolled over to this year?
No.
What's that?
No, it wasn't. I asked Arson in the second.
It was supposed to have been. We asked that it be rolled over to this year, because we didn't spend, we were going to spend it last year. So we asked that it be put in this year's budget.
It was, it was put in, the budget office had put it in, but then after, the time was taken out again, which I had forgotten about.
So who took it up?
I'm sure when the time comes.
Are we doing it in the budget?
I'm sure when the time comes, we'll find out what our baseline is. We'll get it back in there.
Won't forget, you know, this is for the village too. This is for the community. This isn't for just the Historical Society. We're planning on working with Lakes to Locks to make it a welcome center or a heritage center, so it's more than just.
I understand. Everything we do, we try to do for the village.
Try to get people into the village, give them something to come here for that's, you know, interesting.
Yeah, that finishes me, huh? Trustee, Jeff Simble.
Okay, I don't have anything on my agenda tonight, but I just want to talk briefly. Last week, Dave Trudeau, works for Honeywell, came to the village, and we went to the old nursing home. Now, when I say the old nursing home, most people think of the most recent nursing home. I'm talking the old nursing home, the brick building. It's the northernmost building of the two structures. It's going to be turned into a bed and breakfast. So we looked at some of the financing for insulation of the building, and so that's underway right now. We're working on that. We have taken all the money from this year from the IEDP, and we locked in a certain percentage of it for the railroad station, so we're not spending any more of that money, so that at the end of the year, when the bills come in for the windows and some of the things at the railroad station, the money will be there. So all the insulation money for this year, we've exhausted it. After January 1st, we go into the new year. We've got some projects. I have a list of about twenty people here in the village that want their houses insulated. We haven't forgot about them, but we just put them on the sidelines until we could complete the other railroad stations. So after the first of the year, we'll go back to the list, we'll go back to the people that want their houses insulated, and we'll go ahead and move forward. We collect approximately a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year comes out of the electric bills, and it's huge for saving energy and reinvesting for energy savings. So that's where we stand. We won't do any more work this year, next year. Right after first of the year, we got all these lists. We're going to call these people up, and we're going to go in, and we're going to insulate their houses, and hopefully, we're going to be able to do some work at the old municipal. And that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Okay, I just forgot one thing. We got to have an executive session for personnel.
Second. Aye.
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 Mayor, both aye. Okay, trustee Maslow.
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Trustee Reed.
Hey, I have a few things. The first, I'd like to appoint following people to be on the Micro Enterprise Grant Application Review Committee. We have Aaron Heinz, Jim Murphy, Tom Marlowe, and Dick Baker. And we are currently in the process of seeking a fifth person, which we will appoint at a later date, so then put it in the form of a motion to appoint the, of course, I've mentioned, people to the Micro Enterprise Grant Application Review Committee.
Second.
Other discussions? No discussions, vote aye, you decide.
Aye.
Next, I'd like to have the memorandum of understanding for the Lakes to Locks, or the kiosk that we agreed to do. So we have where is the Lakes to Locks Passage, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit management organization for the New York State Seating Byway, known as Lakes to Locks Passage, has received a grant from the New York State Department of Transportation to develop a two-panel waypoint community kiosk along the byway. And whereas the Village of Rouse's Point is a Lakes to Locks Passage waypoint community and desires to sponsor a byway kiosk, and therefore, Lakes to Locks and the Village of Rouse's Point agree as follows. Lakes to Locks agrees to develop, design, and fabricate a two-panel community kiosk. The Village of Rouse's Point agrees to pay the twenty percent match required for the grant, which is six hundred dollars, by May 31st, 2013. Provide assistance in the development of the content and install the kiosk. Any modifications to this agreement must be in writing and signed by both parties, and disagreements which cannot be resolved at the staff level shall be referred to a joint meeting of the executive boards, the Lakes to Locks, and the Village of Rouse's Point for final resolution.
I'll second that.
Any discussions? No discussions, vote aye, you decide.
Aye.
No, wait, no?
Okay, what else you have?
And then I have, so the executive director, Janet Kennedy, from Lakes to Locks, would like, would like if the group could meet with her sometime after October 15th, so she can give us also information about her organization and other opportunities that might be out there. We just need to provide her with some dates, and Melissa's going to join us for those discussions. You want her to come to the next board meeting?
Yeah, I guess, we can do it.
Okay. Then this is just a discussion point for Brian. Donna MoMo wants to start the conversion of the bathroom library for the handicap accessibility. So if you could just talk with her at some point and look at what she wants to do and make sure that the. We don't expect to have it now, but later on in the winter, just so I can kind of get it done.
There's a plan and a design. Are we doing the work ourselves?
Yes. That's the intention.
Is it coming out of the current budget, or is there grant money? I agree with you.
How much for a handicap bathroom? Ten thousand? You're just ballpark, and you don't.
Well, you're only, yeah, you're paying for material.
It's just the materials that was made for.
You're taking out, making doors wider, so you're either taking a dormer and cutting a dormer, or I mean, it's.
Just make one door.
One door, that's all.
Moving a wall and making a door.
I'll be with her. I'll be with her. Maybe Nikki can join us also.
And then lastly, Melissa Lopez would like to request our approval to issue a press release inviting the public to the November 1st meeting to discuss the revitalization committee and to begin the leveraging redevelopment project for the tour of the downtown and waterfront. withhold the tour in November and then plan on beginning the actual revitalization committee meetings after the holidays in January.
I'll second that.
Go, buddy, just shine a aye.
Aye.
Aye. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, and so on.
Other reports? Arson, you can give us that.
I just want to let you know that the workman's comp out of there is supposed to be coming next week. This is supposed to be, this will be the third time, so hopefully, that'll be a charm.
All righty. Brian, you got anything?
The, we're doing the last pour of the curbing on Pearl Street Wednesday, and we're going to just, we got some spot locktalking to do here and there, move things out for the winter. We're getting ready.
Very good looks nice, still look nice. Okay.
When are they going to put the crosswalk paint even on Main Street?
I don't know. I can make a call to Gary Sorrell tomorrow and find out. I know they did one down by Stewart's. That's about the only one I've seen do.
Came from Rochester Orchard Park near Buffalo.
It must be a contractor.
That's what I figured, yeah.
They're going to do them though before the snowbites?
They're supposed to.
Yeah, we got, they said if we could do whatever we wanted, right?
Yes. There's a few that we wanted to add, and they said they would take care of them. Because we've been so accommodating, did I?
Okay, open meeting to the board.
I have a couple of things. First of all, the kiosk within the Lakes to Locks, the Historical Society discussed the third panel. I know that the village board has agreed to do the six hundred dollar match on the two panels, but the third panel is a place where people can post, like, like if the Legion is having something, or, you know, put in posters for community events. And the Historical Society, we discussed it at our last meeting, and Historical Society decided that they would take the lead and they would go out and solicit from the community, the civic organizations in the village, if they were on board with it, would they, would they donate to it. It comes out to about seventy-five dollars from all the ones that we had listed, like the skating club, and the hockey club, and the fire department, and the Legion, and, you know, the normals, the stage committee and all of them. And we also talked about how, what it would be used for, and our, and obviously, it's going to belong to the village, so I guess it's up to you guys, but, and girls, we, our recommendation is that it only be used for nonprofits, that it's not used for, you know, anybody who's advertising a garage sale and this kind of stuff. And we're all so curious about where it's going to be located. Our recommendation was that it be located probably in Rouse Park, because it's easier to get to, it's more central, people are being, be more, probably to stop there and to take a look and see what's on there, because it's a place where there's a lot of bicycles and a lot of walkers. We'll let you know how we make out, raising money. If we don't raise it well, we don't get it. I think Drew Alberti said that it's something we'll make plays for, but we don't, if we don't make the money, we don't do it. That's, that's bottom line. I think it was the May minutes, you talked about this ASCAP, this entertainment, this fee that has to be paid every year to this, sort of, group that protects copyrights and stuff, licenses for artists. And I saw in there that the Fourth of July committee was going to pay thirty percent. Who's going to pay the rest of it?
The thoughts were that because of the events aren't, well, the events are sponsored by the village, but that however we're funding those events upon now, that everybody would share the cost of paying for them. And the Fourth of July, it may be more than thirty percent. So, I mean, if we're using six of the ten days, obviously, whoever is using the days, it should be copyrighted, that portion of the copyright bill. So the thirty percent was just kind of an example as, you know, if there's ten and we take six days, we pay sixty percent, or however it differs up that way. Because there's also events that you don't have to pay the ASCAP fee for. They have them listed on their website, what isn't copyrighted by them and what is. So some of your events may not even help us fall back to that.
Okay. Well, I was just curious if the board was expecting the stage committee to pick up the rest of that. And, you know, we make our money, you know, quarter out of time, you know. It's not like we go out and get a lot of money. Whatever we get from grants, we use for, to bring entertainment, but the rest of it's fifty-fifties or our raffle or donation, and, you know, it's not like we have thousands and thousands of dollars. And all of the stuff that's on the stage is not, is not part of our program, like the, like the cancer group, you know, and we support them, we think that's a wonderful thing, but they didn't go through our committee to do it, and Larry A. there either, and I'm sure that, you know, there may be others next year. You know, I'm sure we're willing to pay our fair share, but we just, I want to make sure we weren't going to be expected to pay all of the rest of it. all of the rest of it.
No, the thoughts were that whoever was using the stage would have to share in that portion. Because obviously, it's not fair for the village either to pay for an event that we're not sponsoring and they're coming down using copyrighted materials. So that person should have to pay whatever their portion is.
It's not, you're not going to be just the one outfit that's badgering you for money. It's going to be three for you. It's going to be after us.
There's actually three copyrighted.
You can't stop them, because they're all legal. They want two hundred or three hundred or four hundred dollars. You got to pay it. So they should have to pay it.
What are you talking about? More copyright?
Besides ASCAP, there's actually two other agencies out there.
But besides ASCAP?
Yes.
ASCAP is just for playwrights. Then you have one for musical rights, and then you have one for everything else.
BMI, they want a thousand bucks right off your environment, when you're playing music. They want a thousand dollars right off, like...
That was one of our...
It's a scam, religious legal scam.
That was one of the things we had our lawyer review, because we started getting all those. So the contractors that came in, we didn't know if they were real or not. So we had to send it to lawyer to make sure that, yes, we actually have to pay these, and they can actually come out to us if we don't do it, so. I think it's quite expensive if we don't share the funding.
Yeah, there is another one called, is it CSAC or something? We have received letters.
That's the third one, so it's BMI, ASCAP, and CSAC.
BMI, BMI had no experience. They come after you, they're, there's no fooling around. They want their money. They're going to go in.
And we paid for all of them this year.
Yes, we did. Any type of music you want, you want to be prepared. Okay, anybody else coming to the public?
Public announcement. The fire department is holding their fall breakfast on Sunday, October twenty-eighth, from eight until noon.
Excellent. Okay. Anybody else from the public? Now, is there a motion?
No. We're going to recess for five minutes, and we're back.
We're going to recess for five minutes.